All right, good evening. Welcome to the October 14th meeting of Manchester Town Council. First order of business is approval of September 9th minutes. They're in your packet. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I make a motion we approve the September 9th minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion to second all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Second, we have the receipt of the September 2014 Treasurers Report.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 2014 Treasurers Report.
I'll second the motion.
This is a point of order. We, I guess we receive it, not approve it, because it gets audited. Motion to second all's in favor, say aye.
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 And then, for this month, we have the October 2014 Check Register. We received that.
You know what? I have to apologize. It was August Treasury Report, it's my fault. September Check Register.
Yeah, because I reviewed it online today and I thought, hmm, okay.
Let's redo that.
Okay.
So, Mona, you amend your...
I make a motion to receive the August 2014 Treasurers Report.
Yeah.
Motion, second's Doyle. All's in favor, say aye.
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 And then, we'll do the same thing for the September Check Register.
Check Register, yeah.
I make a motion to receive the September 2014 Check Register.
You said September, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second that.
Yeah. Motion to second all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was more difficult than it had to be, it usually is. Well, everybody blame Kelly. Mayor's report. Couple items here. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October 15th, is Bulk Trash Pickup. You were supposed to call, right Kelly? I don't do this very often. Can any people still call in the morning?
I don't know if it would be too late or not to tell you. They could, they could try.
So...
Because they can get ahold of the drivers by radio or something, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if you still have bulk items you'd like to pick up, probably call in the morning and see if that's still a possibility. Haley's Wish will hold the Boundless Bash, October 19th, to help provide additional funding for an inclusive playground equipment set at Christmas Tree Park. So, those that you don't know, we do have some information here at the town office. This has been an ongoing project for a couple of years, really good project. Steve talked about some grant funding last month that became available and we were able to take advantage of. So, I think you said with the timing of this was the spring? We hope to have this up and going?
I believe so. We've started some preliminary work on it already, so, yes.
Do you have a spot picked out, a site?
Yes, we do, yes.
Okay. So, this'll be an inclusive playground set that'll be available for people with their children with disabilities. So, October 19th, you'll be able to make that. Second Annual Halloween and Parade Costume Contest. Again, we'll have details here. It's gonna be October 27th. And, a rain date of October 29th from 6:00 to 8:00. So, have details here, but that one went over pretty well, I think, last year. So, hopefully, the participation continues to go up on that and that goes well. Leaf pickup. I know leaves are starting to come down already. We'll do those starting on October 27th and continue through December 1st. Those are on Mondays?
They'll start Monday.
Monday. Okay. Water bills, due Thursday, October 30th. And then, Trick or Treating is October 31st from 6:30 to 8:30. If you do not wish to participate, please turn your light out. I believe that's a Friday this year?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
And then, we have our own Steve Miller. We have a citation here. Steve recently passed his 35-year anniversary mark. We have a certificate of appreciation for Steve.
Woo-hoo.
So, thank you, Steve. That's halfway to a 50 percent pension.
Yeah. I won't be here in another 35 years, I'll tell you that right now, so... No, I appreciate that.
Congratulations, that's awesome.
We have a good group here. We have a good team. I'm a public servant. That's what I'm here to do, is to serve the public. And I think, you know, we instill that through all of our employees and we have a good, good team, good team here, so, I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, on behalf of the entire town, you know, and me personally, after everybody feels the same way, Steve predates all of us here and Steve really makes the town go. So, I think, thank you, you know, from all of us.
Kelly keeps me in line.
Kelly keeps me in line.
Yeah, so...
I could say it tonight.
You didn't do too good, no. You did not, Kelly. You didn't do too good. You weren't shining tonight, Kelly.
I'll cheer for that, I can't wait.
Yep.
Oh.
Well, that's all the hassle. Turn it over to you, Steve.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council. We'll go ahead and start with the September 2014 Administrative Report. Under Pending Items, we have no change in the S.H.A. or Verizon Project. There has been a change in the Sheets Project. We have a meeting with Sheets people and their engineers this Thursday at 2:00 PM here at Town Hall, if you're interested in attending. Our M.E.A. Grant, the bids are still under review. Our Civil War Heritage Trails Grant, specifications are currently being completed for ADA accessibility entrance. No change in our Community Legacy Grant. Mayor Warner spoke a little bit about our Community Parks and Playground Grant in regards to our inclusive playground. As I mentioned, we started some preliminary work and that was work, we're gonna lay out an area up there for ADA parking, for handicap van and handicap car parking. So, that's a start. Also, we've been in contact with Mr. Sean Briggs and he's a representative for Sparks at Play in regards to what types of equipment we want to consider there. We're also working very closely with Mrs. Miller. So, she is the mother of Haley Miller, who comes from Haley's Wish. So, she's been very helpful working with us. Our new Town Hall and Police Station, the demo of the building took place on September the 10th. Meeting was held on September 22nd to make the final changes on the exterior of the building with our architect, Mr. Kamlin, and the contract with Mr. Kamlin was signed on September 30th. Under Charter and Code Revision Work Group, tomorrow will be our first meeting at 2:00 PM. If you're interested, please stop by. Under Code Enforcement, our line of communication with Mr. Osborne's been working out very well. We did have a situation with the folks at the Chestman Street Apartments, one particular person, and we gave Mr. Osborne a call and he abated the problem. So, things are working out so far, so good. Under Miscellaneous Items, I'd like to introduce Patty Garner. Patty is in the process of earning her master's degree from Shippensburg University. Patty is our intern. Kelly and I actually gave her three projects. The project she decided to work on was the feral cap problem that we have throughout the town, especially in the Locust Street area. She has been truly an asset to the town and she's been out talking to the neighbors in the neighborhood. She's been doing a lot of research, a lot of fieldwork. Patty, you're gonna be attending a seminar coming up?
Yeah, for Thursday evening at Barks, um...
So, she, she has grasped this project and moving forward with it. She's doing very well. We're very pleased to have her here. The Manchester Valley High School Advisory Committee, our initial meeting was held on September the 15th. Mayor Warner, we had Manchester Police Department Officers Kazmier and Garner there and I were present. Our next meeting will be next Monday, which is October the 20th. You have in front of you, which is part of the agenda, some personnel policy updates, actually, one in particular. That'll be coming up a little bit later. And Chief Hess and I are also looking into the increased truck traffic that we've been noticing on York Street. Okay. Moving right along, our Public Works Report for September. Under Water, you have our September Monthly Water and Waste Water Report. Our hydrant flushing will take place on October 29th. That'll start about 9:00 PM. Under Waste Water, our Nutrient Management Plan has been completed for our spray irrigation facility and that has been sent both to M.D.E. and the Maryland Department of Agriculture for their files. Under NPDS Stormwater, we'll talk about this a little bit later, but this is the MOA with County and Municipalities and this will be coming to you folks to give Mayor Warner the authority to sign for Manchester next Thursday, October 23rd, at the meeting with the Commissioners and the Mayors. Our tree planting project at Manchester Farms, a successful bidder was Chesapeake Environmental and that planning will take place this month. And our stormwater management facility planned at the skate park, actually CLSI won the bid, I think I mentioned that last month. Three conceptual plans will be coming back to the county. They'll meet, the county folks will meet with the town in regards to the conceptual design and to see which design would fit best in that area. I mentioned to you folks, probably 12 to 14 months ago, when this project started, we have to keep in the back of our mind that when this project moves forward, we have to relocate our skate park somewhere. So, we have to keep that in mind where we want to relocate it. My park supervisor has had some ideas. We had thought some, some different places, but just keep that in the back of your mind over the next several months. Under Maintenance Roads and Parks, Mr. Hupman came in at the last meeting and he had some valid concerns about the Walnut Street and Water Street ponds. On September 22nd, I spoke with Mr. Charles Gowen at DNR and this was in regards to Mr. Hupman's, he told us about a triploid carp and that was, that's used for algae control. After I spoke to Mr. Gowen, he advised me that this type of carp is considered a vazy species to Maryland waters. He did put me in touch with a Mark Staley, also who works for DNR, and we're working together to set up a meeting at both, or at the Water Street Pond to see what other avenues we can take. And our town maintenance crews have been repainting the stop lines at our major intersections and Carroll County Rose Department have restripped our major streets. That is it. Any questions for me?
Steve, what means are you guys using to measure the traffic increase on York Street?
Actually, I think we're gonna look at using our specific trailer.
We're gonna have to go back to the trailer. We have been doing enforcement. That's been one of the areas we've hit, along with the Halle and, and the other areas. It's, you know, if we're not there, it continues. If we're there, they'll slow down. But it is heavy truck traffic.
I guess speed's one thing and the amount is another.
Yeah, and I don't know how we're gonna go about to reroute it. I think the hot time's probably between the hours of, I would say, probably 11 to 4, isn't it?
I'd say that's, I'd agree with that.
Which way are they heading, south? They're coming out, making a left?
They're coming into town.
Well, then where are they going?
Heading south.
South on 30, not 27?
Right. They'll grab that, they'll grab the light right out here, turn left.
And you'll get more coming out of York than, you know, coming north on 30, heading south. So, I guess it's, it's at Split, it's at Limeboro.
Correct. Limeboro, Limeboro Road.
Instead of continuing straight, they'll branch off.
Right.
So, that's, that's the point? They're all coming through Limeboro?
My guess.
Mm-hmm.
Ultimately, we'd just be a lot better off if there was a way just to get south outside of town.
Right. Because right now, truthfully, it's a cat and mouse game. I mean, if they know we're out, I guess they get on the radios, the word gets out, it slows down, but if we get diverted somewhere else, then they pick it back up again.
So, from a, a speed perspective?
Speed.
Because they're, they're coming through either way, but if they know you're there, then they just slow down.
Yeah. And I think someone, and Steve would probably be able to speak better than all of us, that jake break in the early morning hours or late at night?
Correct.
Is disturbing.
And we tried to deal with that before and they just, right? I know the signs, they're still all over the place in the state.
Actually, the, the jake break issue that we went after was on Route 30?
Right.
On the state highways and, and state highways told us we could not do that. Now, our streets, we can. We can, you know, basically do anything we want to with those.
But those signs are up?
They are, and I brought that...
In the state?
I brought that to their attention. That is correct. I mean, actually, there are signs up just south of Hampstead, once you enter into Ballmer County. You know, the use of brake retarders are prohibited in this area and, uh...
Is it like the state doesn't want to put any more up or they just don't want them in this area?
I think it was just they didn't want them in this area because that was the question about, you know, Route 30 here, Friday or Mill, and actually, the trucks, the jake brakes would rattle so bad that it would set home alarms off.
Well, if we can put them up in our area, we should put them up.
We can. We, you know, and we might want to...
That's not an ordinance, right? We can just do that.
Right.
It's not like changing a stop sign or anything.
Right.
Yeah. Let's look at some places we can get those things up.
So, I guess speed's measurable, but wear and tear damage to the area that's not suitable for that is not really as miserable, but it knows occurring?
We can see it.
In the short run.
You know, York Street was laid down, probably reblack topped, I would say, no more than six or seven years ago. And we could really see the wear and tear on York Street. Unfortunately, we had the water main break last year and, you know, I, I push out toward the heavy truck traffic. You can actually feel the home shake when those trucks go past the house. I mean, when we laid down the blacktop, I mean, in some areas on York Street, we may have as much as six inches of blacktop out there and it's showing the stress because the base of York Street was never built to handle the heavy traffic and that's what it amounts to. It was never designed to handle that much traffic. The heavy traffic, the weight.
All right. So, we may have to look at options. I mean, we can't stop the trucks coming through, but we probably can look at ways to spread it out.
Uh huh.
What we should do. All right. Um, anything else for... So, you haven't dropped any AAA carps yet?
No. That was a very good conversation. It was a little bit beyond me, but the guy knew what he was talking about, so...
Anything else for, for Steve? Chief?
Yes, sir. On the heels of that, we did have about 42 traffic stops, 21 state citations, 21 warnings, same areas, Manchester Farms area, Halle. We were getting some kudos on Facebook, so I noticed they noticed our enforcement down there. York Street as well. We did have 56 calls for service this month. Three of them were burglaries, two of which we've cleared by arrest. The third burglar, we have a suspect on, so we're working on that angle right now. We did also make a narcotic arrest for heroin, which is extending into a larger investigation. We're getting outside help on. And we did have a shed over at the manual luthrum was broken into. They stole weed whacker and some other lawn equipment. We really don't have a suspect on that case at this point. It is National Team Driver Safety Week. Young ladies down there. So, we are working with the school. We have it on our website as well. It's five to drive, no cell phones, no, no extra passengers, no alcohol, no speeding and no driving or riding without a seatbelt. Ladies, you got that, understand that?
Yeah, clear. Young ladies.
Young lady, right. The young ladies to the right. Coming up on October 22nd, we're gonna be going to the Carroll County Health Department. We're going for specialized training dealing with alcohol enforcement and prevention, dealing with underage drinking. That's gonna be on the 22nd. And then, in November, we're, we're gonna become part of the Crisis Intervention Team. It's gonna be training, it's also gonna be held over there, actually Westminster P.D.'s gonna hold it. It's dealing with mental health issues. We're gonna try to, eventually, I, I believe that the state as a whole, it'll become standardized for the officers to be trained and being able to recognize the mental health issues and hopefully getting that person the help that they need, but more importantly, so we don't have an issue that's been repeated in the past, going to excessive force, dealing with these individuals. Being able to recognize the problems and trying to come up with other safer tactics to get the individuals under control and get them the proper help. Jeff Spalding's leading the charge on that and Manchester will be part of that.
Yay!
So, I'm happy about that. I'm not sure who else in the county besides the sheriffs that are gonna be part of it, but Manchester will be part of that. And Ron Gardner is gonna be our main guy on that. So, that training will be pretty decent, I'm looking forward to that. But outside of that, everything's been pretty quiet. We are ready for Halloween and also the Second Annual Halloween Parade, which will be held on October 27th and the rain date will be October 29th. The times will be 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And we're also gonna be prepared for that as well. Any questions?
Anything else for the chief?
Now, there was, I guess, some focus on bullying and other issues like that. Chief, you guys have been involved with that?
Uh, you know, I'm sure you heard about the one incident that they had. I gotta tell you, I met with Jamie Carver down at the middle school. I think the middle school's pretty much the hub of it right now. He's, he's got his fair share of problems, but I think they're on top of it. I put him in touch with some other people that are experts in that area and I believe he reached out to them.
Good.
And, you know, the, the, we're close with the principal at Manchester Valley. I have his number, he has my number. If we recognize any problems, we're definitely in communication to deal with them.
Good, thank you. Bullying's been going on since the beginning of time, but...
Yeah.
Until somebody does, until there's severe punishments, it's...
And it's changed. Social media...
Social media's made it worse.
It enhances it.
Makes it much more severe.
Yeah. They never get away from it and more people get involved.
I think with the ongoing feeling of embarrassment, which is one of the big things, right? Because they know it's permanent and it's out there and more people see it?
Right.
As opposed to somebody calling your name on a playground?
And then it ends at the playground.
And move on.
Right.
Right. So, yeah, it has changed. Anything else for the, the chief? Steve, do you want to brief the group on the revision?
Sure. We submitted a revert, a revision to the Personnel Policy and as it states, it's regarding meal reimbursement. We basically had an unwritten rule with, through our employees that, look, if you're out on an emergency, you're plowing snow, you're in an all-day class, you know, you buy your meals and the town will reimburse you for this. Last year, when we were going to FEMA and MEMA to get reimbursed during the snowstorm, the question was brought up, did you reimburse your employees for meals? And we said, yes, we did. You have a policy, correct? No, we don't. Well, we weren't reimbursed for that. So, that's basically how this policy came, came about. And it's good, we didn't have any, any written policy, so, we feel that, the administrative staff feels that those, those costs are fine, you know, what we allow the folks to have and we're, you know, pretty happy with that. So, that's a revision to our Personnel Policy. So, that's an action item, if you folks would like to vote on that, so...
Do you have a question? I don't have the problem with this, this is, this is good, was that, did we consider per diems as opposed to actual expense with receipts?
Right.
These are fine when you're in Manchester?
Mm-hmm.
But where I work, you're not gonna get a lunch or a breakfast for $10.
We, we kinda looked and actually, no, we kinda looked at where the folks go for their trainings, you know, during an emergency, they would be right around town. So, we really didn't look outside the general area. You know, let's say they travel to Baltimore or someplace like that.
Actually, these are state payout rates.
Yeah, that's per diem.
Is that, is that what state is?
Yeah.
That was gonna be my last question, how that compares to state.
Yeah, and you can look it up, the federal payout rates that the state and federal government honor.
Now, my question is, and I'm just asking, just because I wanna be sure of this, and I just asked Tammy and, I thought we had to and obviously we don't, but I just wanna make sure, give them a per diem per day. So, we still have to get a receipt from them and not give them per diem?
I can, I can tell you how it works. Most of the time, when they're working in an emergency, the, the charges will be put on the supervisor's card, one of the supervisor's cards. So, that's, that's how it works. Same way if they're, if they're plowing, snow, things like that. Now, if they're out and let's say they have a training, each one of them would charge it on their particular card.
I just wanted to make sure, I know a couple of the other counties have it where they set up a per diem period and I just wanted to make sure we didn't have to do that?
Right.
That we can set it how we want to then?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
And again, I'm thinking, suppose we send somebody in Public Works to a seminar that's very unique in Ohio?
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna give them just $10, $15, and $20?
We could probably...
As opposed to the per diem for that state?
Yeah. In a situation like that, we could probably, I, I wouldn't have a problem...
Per diems are different by state.
You know, adjusting that, you know?
Does this still give us the option to pay actuals as opposed to per diems?
No, it's, no.
Yes.
Counselperson, blacks, right. I mean, even in Baltimore, the per diem's set. If you go over, it comes out of your pot.
Right.
But the per diems are different in different states.
In different states, maybe.
So, if we send somebody to Ohio, we're gonna then follow the Ohio, the per diem in Ohio?
Oh, no, no.
No, it's set in your state. It follows the employee.
Yep.
Wow. As a contractor for the federal government, now my per diem is based on where I go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I travel to California, I'm getting California's per diem, not Maryland's per diem.
They don't have to do that.
Not with the standard...
I'm, I'm, but you said, we got Maryland's state per diem.
For, for the, for the rare times that that may occur, I would have no problem, you know, adjusting it for that particular employee or, or two employees or whatever it was.
Well, even if it's outside of policy, as long as we have the option to pay actuals?
Right.
So, if they went someplace like, let's say we sent somebody to Manhattan, right? Manhattan's very expensive.
Within reason, correct.
True act, this is not to exceed, though. So, does, we can't pay true actuals if it exceeds those numbers?
Yeah, you're right.
I don't know that it happens often enough to really make a, a big issue out of it, I was just curious.
Well, could, could we just, I think we wanna get something in place, because what we don't want to happen is we get stuck in an emergency situation and we're not gonna get reimbursed again.
Right, like last year.
But, nothing stops us from taking a look at this and considering contingencies, because we don't, the, the one or two times where something's gonna happen, we're not looking to stick one of our employees with, you know?
I don't want to send somebody to California and say, sorry, you, it cost you double...
But we don't do that. Fortunately, we don't have a lot of that, so it's something, like you said, can probably be handled on a case-to-case basis with some kind of small wording change.
Based on, right.
Just a small wording change.
And, and you have to remember, you know, we're, I'm kinda, I'm kinda looking at our water and wastewater folks during training, but we also have to look at the Police Department, too. So, if the Police Department, you know, members of the Police Department went out of state, you know, again, it would be on a case-to-case basis and we understand, you know, if you go somewhere else, the cost was higher.
Just a small change of wording, probably.
Excuse me?
Maybe a small change of wording, so it just doesn't say not to exceed? Or do we, does it matter?
We could, we, we could adjust the wording somehow, yeah.
Just so we don't fall into a...
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah.
You could say extend your wording case-by-case circumstances will be considered.
Then, then is it a policy? Or, I think the policy, though, should be, like, you know, at the discretion of the town manager, or with approval of the town administrator. You know, something like that.
Yeah, that way, he's just got-
As long as that's still a valid, I think the piece that we're trying to cover ourselves in is-
Sure.
That our policy meets what's going to get the town reimbursed if we have this emergency situation again. So, our policy, which is no policy, worked for us before, right? We just treat people fairly.
But we lost a lot of money, so we just want to-
Right, so we need a policy that doesn't leave the town at risk, where at the same time, we don't want to create a bad situation for the town employees.
Yeah, we don't want to limit that, right.
Correct.
So if we don't put a limit, if we don't have not to exceed, is this, or actuals at the discretion of the town administrator?
Can do that.
If that's a legal policy, we just change it back.
What does, uh, all the, the people that questioned you on this, what are they, what are they recommending?
They don't question, quite frankly, it was because we, in the past-
They just want a policy.
Right.
In the past, if they went to dirty water, it was five o'clock in the morning, because they've been plowing all night, no one ever went-
We, we had, we had all of our receipts in place, Kelly had all the receipts, and, and the folks from FEMA said, now, if you don't have a policy in place, we can't pay out.
Little loophole there?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm just thinking of the, your rare example, where we send somebody out of town, I don't want them financially burdened, to say, we're sending you to this seminar because there's this new water treatment system in Ohio, and we want you to learn that, and by the way, you're going to lose money on the trip because we're forcing you to go. I just want to avoid that.
I think as long as it's pre-approved by Steve, the town manager, I don't think, don't you think, I think that would be okay?
I think so.
Yeah, we wouldn't-
Can we just put that in there and be done with it?
Yeah.
You know, unless pre-approved by town administrator.
We can do that, that's no problem.
And then we still have a policy, but we're still protecting the employees in that-
Right, yes.
One-off case, so they're not, they're not out of pocket for it.
Correct.
I think that sounds fine.
So other expenses are approved at the discretion of the town manager?
That's fine.
Or other expenses or amounts exceeding, in excess. Is that an action item, something we should vote on?
Yes, let's change the personnel policy, we'll insert that wording into that policy.
So you want to say unless pre-approved by the town administrator, these are not to exceed meal reimbursement amounts as far as? Don't think that affects it.
I think, I think that covers it, yeah.
So unless otherwise.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
You okay? I have a motion to adopt that into the personnel policy as amended.
So I make a motion that we adopt the Chapter 16 change in the safety policy for meal reimbursement, um, with the wording change to include, um, so unless otherwise approved with the town manager, et cetera, et cetera.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to second, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Alright.
Good.
Check out the wrong one here. Alright. Moving on, Steve, I know this next one's something you, you and some others, but you put a lot of work into.
Okay, uh, let me give you the short version real quick. Um, if you remember back in April, uh, you folks gave Mayor Warner permission to sign a memorandum of intent with all the other mayors in the county and, and the, uh, county commissioners in regards to the cost sharing of the stormwater management facilities for the mitigation of stormwater between the county and the municipalities and falling underneath a one NPDES stormwater permit. A part of that MOI was how were we going to divvy out the funds and who was going to stand the responsibility and so on and so forth. Uh, after many months of work, the WRCC finally, which I emailed you folks, finally finished up our final copy of the MOA. Give you a brief history on this. Uh, as you well know, all of our municipal attorneys has looked at this, approved it, they've actually come back with second comments, which we've incorporated into this. Uh, the county attorney has looked at it. Uh, the county actually hired an outside firm, Aqua Law, to review it. Uh, they had some comments which were incorporated into that. Uh, last Wednesday, Frank Schaefer, myself, as part of the WRCC committee, and also Tom Demblebliss and Brenda Denny, went before the county commissioners to bring them up to speed on this. Uh, we had no opposition whatsoever through all five county commissioners. So, this is a final package. Uh, it shows you probably eight months' worth of hard work. Uh, it's, like I said, it's been reviewed through numerous agencies, numerous, uh, legal firms, and I'm coming to you tonight to ask, uh, approval to give Mayor Warner approval to sign on for the town of Manchester next Thursday evening at the joint session between the mayors and the county commissioners. One more thing before I close. Our first five years, this is just for Manchester, our first five years of this agreement, this will save the town $800,000. If we would have went out by ourselves, it would have cost us pretty much close to a million dollars, not including the possibility of having to hire somebody, okay? So now we're teaming up with the county to take care of our entire 204 acres that we have to mitigate over the next so many years, it will save the town $4 million. And that's another conservative figure. So you can see that the joint work between the county commissioners and also the municipalities, it's going to be a win-win on both sides. And, uh, we're pretty hap- the WRCC is pretty happy about this, so. That's my request to you folks, to, uh, give Mayor Warner permission to sign on for Manchester.
We just need a motion? Any other questions for Steve? Still a 70/30, Steve, even split, or 80/20?
No, it's 80/20, 80/20, yes.
What was the $4 million spread out over?
Uh, if you go, uh, I, you folks, I emailed you folks, but we have, the town of Manchester has 204 acres of impervious surface that we have to mitigate. Now, in the first five years, we have to mitigate 20% of that, but when you look at the entire 204 acres that we have to mitigate, uh, over that, over that time period, which would be more than five years, we'd be spending close to $4 million to do that. And, and we're actually looking at, uh, our cost share, which is, is an Exhibit B of the, of the plan. We're look, actually, I'm sorry. Actually, Exhibit C of the plan, it's costing us up, somewhere in the neighborhood of about $40,000 a year. So after the five years, at the five-year point, we'd be up close to, in the fifth year, about $50,000 a year. Manchester is one of the very few communities that's actually looked ahead, and we've been putting monies back for the last several years, so we're, we're in pretty good shape for that.
Alright, so I make a motion that we, um, approve Mayor Warner, being, you know, authority and signatory for the town of Manchester to end and enter into this memorandum of, of agreement, um, between the county government for the purposes of cost sharing of stormwater mitigation projects, um, October the 23rd.
I'll second that.
We're not going to ask you to repeat that, word for word.
Okay.
I didn't read that all the time. Um, motion to second, any discussion? No, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Thank you, I will be there, look forward to signing it and getting, uh, you going to attend?
Yes, I'll be there, yep. I believe all the town managers will be there, the mayors will be there. I'll be there representing the WRCC, so.
Yeah. Significant steps.
Yeah.
Questions, comments from the community?
I, I'll just say that we appreciate the town's, uh, help for this upcoming Halloween parade, and that's been kind of-
Do you want to, uh-
We're going to start it here at the school.
Do you want to come up and talk in here and get a little plug-in, that way it's-
Ah, that's good.
Alright. More, more people watch than you think when you're sitting here. Tens of people.
We're going to start at the elementary school, right here on York Street, like we did last year, but this year, we're not going to be parading up and down Main Street as many times as we did last year. What happened last year is we started at the school, went down to Main Street, up to the Gary Business Center, had cake walks and pizza walks, came back to school, had other cake walks, and the idea was we were going past the judging stand, which was on Main Street. This year, we're going to start at the school, do one or two cake walks, and then do the parade up to the Gary Business Center and stay there. That'll eliminate a lot of the walking, uh, we, we liked the plan because it kept the kids on this side of Main Street, there was no crossing streets, the big, biggest problem area was at the sheeps, and, uh, we had the police help there, but that'll be one time. And I'm glad to say that last year, we had three cakes. The cakes that are given away are donated by members of the mama, and we had three cakes last year, and they had their business name on the cake, and this year, we've got six already, and when we have Thursday's meeting, we may have more cakes. Cake walk, by the way, is the, the highlight of the whole thing, they just love it, and that's, that's the best part. But we have trophies to give out for the scariest, funniest, best homemade-
Most colorful.
Those categories, all will get trophies. And last year, I'd said this so many times, we didn't have a big crowd because we were competing against trick-or-treat night in Hanover. Uh, this year, we're not, we're picking the dates that they're not doing either trick-or-treat or their parade. So wasn't a really big crowd, but almost every one of them, when it broke up when we were leaving, just kept, thank you, thank you, for what a great time. That's why we won't do it again.
That's great.
So we're looking for it.
Anybody else? I'll go to, uh, committee reports. Councilman Smith?
Carroll Cable Commission, we had a meeting two weeks ago, and they're still working on the franchise agreement. That's where we are right now. No other updates.
Okay. Councilman Black?
Just one update from planning and zoning. Um, there was a motion at the last meeting on the 16th of September to continue with the Manchester Farms Section 7 project, given a couple of, um, more pending approvals from the state and county. And, yeah, representatives were, were both from the engineering company and from Bob Ward Holmes, so. Looks like, um, there was a list of items that they had dealt with, um, since August and did a good job on that, there was just two remaining minor things, if you will, and there was some follow-up discussion in meetings about that, so.
Okay. Very good. Councilman Wilder?
As soon as I receive the final comments on the joint use agreement, I'll have that prepared for the councils at the mentioned last meeting. Steve, I like to be involved in discussions when we start talking about the skate park again.
Mm-hmm.
I'd invested, I really interested in that the last time we had it there, and-
Yes.
All the concerns that we, the issues we faced, but, uh, hopefully we can eliminate those.
Correct, correct.
Like to be involved in that, thank you.
Do that.
That's a good.
I know Dr. Scott recently retired, retired in the last year, right?
Excuse me?
Dr. Scott retired, I don't think he spent as much time up here.
Yes, correct, he did.
I saw his son the other day and mentioned that we were possibly moving the skate park. I guess he's not here as much as he used to be.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Nothing from the youth representative? You give us a field hockey recap?
No.
Not for last night.
You don't want to announce that you, Manchester Valley beat Westminster for the first time in school history?
Football. Football, you were asking for field hockey.
No, I really meant football when I said field hockey. Alright, anything else for this board?
I just wanted to just mention, I don't know how, um, much has been talked about already, but I just wanted to say again, just kudos to the town for Kelly and Steve, um, for being recognized as a smart energy community, so that's a big deal, and I thought John did a great job with the article and, um, that the, you know, Manchester's on, on top of it, but maybe small but mighty, so.
That is, that is a big, that, that's a big deal.
Yep.
Yeah, we're working on our third round right now. Uh, we have some items that, uh, the last time, we left some money on the table, and we're trying to get that money back for some of the projects we want to do.
Yeah.
But, but again, you know, it, it, we need the entire workforce to, to chip in and, and help out when it comes to turn the thermostats down, lights off, things like that, so, yeah, that's a, that's a major project.
Very good. Yeah, the pleasure of being there when we accepted the award, and I said that I was proud to receive it on behalf of Steve and Kelly, because they deserve all the credit for that one, just-
They do, all the credit.
A lot of hard work into that.
Yeah, again, it, again, it's, it broadens out, you know, all of our employees have to be up to speed on what to do, and how to save energy and things like that, so. Very good, thank you.